Good evening. It's 5:30 PM on Wednesday, July 16th, and this special meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in council chambers at 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I'm Mayor Jeremy Grimm presiding. Also present are City Council President Deb Rule, Councilors Joe Spiro, Justin Dick, Kyle Schreiber, Pam Duquette, and Rick Howard. Under the city's code of ethics and civility as a presiding officer, I am to identify law enforcement personnel serving as sergeant-at-arms for this evening's meeting. Tonight, we have Police Chief Corey Kuhn in the back. If everyone will please stand, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting was originally called for the purpose of holding a public hearing to consider adoption of the 2025 Capital Improvement Plan and Development Impact Fee Study, which we will take up shortly. With council's postponement of a decision on tentative approval of the proposed fiscal year 2026 revenues and expenditures, intent to use foregone levying authority and the scheduling of the annual budget public hearing, the budget workshop that had been proposed for August 6th will also take place at this evening's meeting. I also need to report that the agenda was amended yesterday with the addition of an executive session. Because an amendment was made and posted in less than 48 hours prior to the meeting per Idaho Code, the amended agenda cannot become effective till City Council votes to accept it. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to accept the amended agenda and proceed with the amended agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Dick, seconded by Duquette. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Spurrow?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we get started with those items, I'd first entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the council's July 9, 2025 meeting.
They're moved.
Second?
Moved by Schreiber, seconded by Duquette. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Spurrow?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now move on to the public hearing and council's consideration of adoption of the 2025 Capital Improvement Plan and Development Impact Fee Study. If you wish to testify on this matter, please complete a public comments sign-up form located on the table at the entrance doors and hand it to staff at the back of the room. At this time, I'll yield the floor to Community Planning Development Director Jason Welker.
Good evening, Council. Melissa, is Nick on Zoom? Okay, so we are not going to run through the whole PowerPoint that you saw just three weeks ago, I believe, at this point. There was a staff report, just to kind of give you the background on the development of this study over the last year, and remind you of what kind of fees we're looking at for the new year. I did summarize your deliberation from the last meeting at which the study was presented by our consultants at Tischler Bice, including the discussion among the counselors of the possibility of phasing the increases over three years instead of going from today's rates to the new fees in one year. So I will entertain any questions. I do have Nicholas Huff available on Zoom. He might be the more appropriate one to answer questions that you may have. Otherwise, we can move on to the public hearing. So feel free to ask myself or Nick any questions you may have, and here we have Nick.
Hey, good evening, Nick. Thanks for joining us. Jeremy Grimm here, and one of the things I did want to just add that didn't get covered in the last overview of the impact fees, and Nick, maybe you can add to this. I'm not sure the council's aware that if a developer or property owner chooses to contend their or contention with their impact fees, they do have the right, under Idaho Code, to ask for a site-specific analysis. Is that still accurate, Nick?
To the best of my knowledge, yes. It doesn't happen very often, but I do believe that that's true.
Great, excellent. I just wanted the council to be aware of that if they weren't for some reason. So with that, council members, does anyone have any questions for Tischler Bice, Nicholas Huff, who is joining us on the impact fees?
Mr. Mayor, could you explain what you just got clarified?
Absolutely, Councilwoman Duquette. So if I'm a property owner, I'm doing a subdivision, and you know, the impact fees per our potentially adopted schedule, they don't seem right to me. I can protest those and ask for a individual assessment of what is the impact on my of my project or my development on the system and the level of service. So for instance, if somebody were maybe including a park inside their subdivision, they might be able to, you know, we might be able to do an analysis showing that, you know, their park impacts are lower because they're providing that. Therefore, maybe they would have a slightly lower park fee.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman Howard.
I do have a couple of questions that I'm not sure whether it's directed at Nick or Jason, so either one of you can answer. In general, as I reviewed for tonight, if we adopted what's proposed at the maximum level, we would double, essentially closely double, the impact fees for development. So one question, have we ever in the history of the city seen increases of that magnitude in these fees before? Have we ever doubled them in the history of the city?
The mayor would know more about the further back history. I know from 2011 to 2021, there were no increases in development impact fees, not even for inflation during that period. I believe it was 2021 where we did a across-the-board...
I think that was actually just last year.
Was it?
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe it was 12 years without increases.
Councilman Howard, I don't recollect the exact percentage increase, but when we did them in 2011, they did increase substantially from their historical levels that we had previous. But I do not recollect what that original jump was.
And the second question related to that, and maybe more important, is with a significant increase in impact fees, do we anticipate a reduction in development in the city? Is there any correlation to fees and the amount of development that we're going to see? Are we going to see projects that kind of are on the line and people say, eh, I don't want to do it, the fees now are too expensive? Or in the grand scheme of a project, are the fees still relatively small in the total cost of a project and it wouldn't matter anyway?
Yeah, I can speak to that, and then I'll turn it over to Nick or Jason. I obviously work in the development community all over the region, and I did do impact fees. I did work for Tischler Bice for some time. What I've seen is that, you know, it's a porous nature, so you do get communities that are pitting themselves against their neighbor. For instance, sometimes you'll hear, well, I'm not going to develop in this town because the town next door has lower impact fees. So I'm not going to suggest that they don't have any impact or influence on where development occurs, but in general, I take three comments that I've heard over the years. One is that the impact fees are a known figure, so rather than slowing a development project by negotiating each element, for instance, if there's a subdivision coming in, we might negotiate for, what are you going to do for our fire department? What are you going to do for our parks department? And our streets and our fire, I mean, and our police? Some developers prefer to have just that one line item because time is money, and they know that those negotiations can occur for a long time. The second thing is, you know, a lot of these fees, if you look at the build options for a fairly modern home, going from, you know, Pergo to granite or stainless steel or epoxy refrigerators, some of those are larger line items just for the amenities in the total build than these impact fees. So in general, it's a relatively small number on the total build. I'm not saying it's, I'm not insensitive to it, but it's an overall housing package. It's a pretty small percentage. So I have not seen impact fees unless they're really high, and I worked on some in South Carolina where they're $23,000 per house just for the school impact fee. We're not anywhere near that level, so I would not expect this to retard growth. The only thing I would say is that by staging them as a three-step, we may get folks to perform projects in the first year that they might otherwise hadn't. So we may actually accelerate growth this next year.
And my last question...
Councilman Howard, I actually just did a quick calculation in response to your question. Currently, at a cost of $250 per square foot, which is from what we hear, pretty standard these days, a 2,000-square-foot house would pay a development impact fee equal to 1.06% of the total construction cost, and under the maximum supportable fee proposed in the study, that would go up to 2.5%. So you're talking a difference of a 1% to 1.5% margin or change in the total cost of construction by the updated impact fee. And when we talk in Sandpoint about growth needing to pay for itself, that's really what we're talking about. That's reflecting the impact of that single-family home on our system, our streets, our pathways, our parks, and police and fire.
Perfect.
And I just want to update, I just got a bid back for a private client for a home. One was $560 per square foot and one was $800 per square foot. So $250, I would love to know what builder can build for $250 a square foot around here right now.
Those percentages would be quite a bit smaller, actually.
Yes, it would, yeah, make our argument even better. My last question, and I had asked Jason this in an email, and I'll share it for everybody's benefit. As I looked through the forecasted capital needs, so all of the capital needs that we put together totaled roughly $58 million, of which only $15 million are eligible for impact fees. And so my question was, even if we raise it and we get the impact fees, does the city have the ability to fund the other $43 million of capital? Or is what's going to happen that the city can't do all of that and it'll be scaled back, and in some respects, we're getting more fees than we can perform the other, the capital improvements that we have to go self-fund ourselves?
Yeah, it's a great question, Commissioner, I mean, Councilman Howard, and I'll let Nick speak to it and fill in, but to some degree, yeah, if we collect fees and don't do some of these projects, especially if they're plan-based projects, then we would potentially have to return those fees, which is a bit of an accounting nightmare. So in general, if they're incremental-based projects, we can just add to them, which many of these are, and build them as we proceed, and those collections come in. And then, you know, if you take these out and assume this is a, I know it's a five-year plan, but the 10-year project for $4 million a year, I think it's ambitious, but I wouldn't say it's unattainable. But Nick, can you fill in and expand on that?
Yeah, so just kind of to, you know, further expand on what Mayor Grimm was saying, under the incremental expansion approach, which we've taken with parks, pathways, police and fire, the capital improvement plan itself does not directly influence the fees in the way you might be thinking. The fee for those different departments is based on the currently provided level of service, what they have in the ground today compared to, for example, you know, the peak population at Sandpoint, you know, number of jobs in Sandpoint, number of non-residential vehicle trips and so on. The only one who has a CIP that directly influences the fee in some way is the street's transportation fee, where the fee is based on the growth-related percentage of those individual projects, and that was found by comparing the 10-year growth in vehicle miles of travel compared to what exists today to try to find that growth percentage. So for the other categories, you know, again, pathways, parks, police and fire, even though in some cases the CIPs might reflect that they are more aggressive than the 10-year need shows based on that currently provided level of service, that does not mean that they are collecting fees higher than are appropriate. It just means that the CIPs may be a little more aggressive than the impact fees will be able to provide, but under the incremental expansion approach, the city is not obligated to provide everything on that list like they would be under the plan-based approach.
And last question, Nick, did I read that we have up to eight years to use the funds that we collect, or did I misinterpret the timeline in which we have to use those funds?
Yes, it's generally up to eight years, and in some extenuating circumstances, it can be up to 11 years.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman Schreiber.
Yeah, just a follow-up question to that same topic. Did I understand that you just said we will be obligated to fulfill every project in that plan?
So on the plan-based elements, so the streets, we have a CIP, which is today our best assessment of what those projects are going to be, based on the volume of traffic and the demands. To some degree, those are what, I mean, that's what we're basing the fee off of in the vehicle miles traveled. We can change that CIP throughout time. So if we decide in two years or next year that it's not that project, it's another project, we can change that CIP.
Perfect, thank you.
Please confirm that, Nick, if I have it wrong.
Yeah, that's true. And then also important to note was, I think there's a traffic engineering study that the city's going to be undertaking to get like a more accurate growth-related percentage of that CIP as well.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions for either Nicholas or Director Welker?
Mr. Mayor, I guess along those same lines, I was thinking of when a motion was made to have an amendment that says those listed projects don't constitute a mandate for the city to undertake, is that the same thing you're saying?
Yes. Next will be the public hearing. I'd like to make everyone aware that the city does have a policy in public meeting decorum. The rules are posted just outside the chamber entry doors. In summary, I'd ask that everyone please be pleasant and respectful, not make derogatory statements about others, including city staff, not be disorderly or disruptive, no calling out, clapping, or holding up signs. Opportunities for public comment, including public hearing testimony, are for comments only, no questions or debate. As mentioned earlier, if you wish to testify on this matter, please complete a public comments sign-up form, hand it to staff. When it's your turn to speak, please state your name and whether you reside in Sandpoint city limits. Unless gifted time by another member of the public in attendance in the room, each speaker will have up to three minutes. Also, if there's anyone attending remotely who wishes to testify, you may raise your hand on Zoom at this time. The public hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, please call the per speaker.
Mr. Mayor, no one has signed up to speak on this matter.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there anyone else? With those who wish to testify, having had an opportunity to do so, the public hearing is now closed. Council will now deliberate and may ask questions of staff. And the consultant, the option for council actions were included in the staff report. Council, please deliberate. Not a real barn burner of an issue, maybe, but...
I do have, Mr. Mayor, I do have a question. So if we decided as the council to adopt a phased approach, which I think was recommended at maybe the meeting that I was unable to attend, are we committed to do those increments every year? So as an example, what was proposed was 75% of the recommendation in 2026, 90%, and then 100% by 2028. If after the first year, we saw that we were hypothetically getting more impact fees than we had the ability to use, could we then say we're going to freeze it at 75 and not take the next step?
So the fees would be adopted at the annual budget and fee schedule, so we would adjust those annually.
Okay, so we would have the ability to go say, okay, let's hold it there, or let's take that next incremental step. Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman.
I guess along those same lines, then, if we decided to take the full and not do the phased, we could change that at some point?
You can always, at your annual fee schedule, I presume, reduce your impact fees. It's a good question. I don't know what that would do to people that already paid them at a higher level. I've never had that question, typically because cities always have projects to do. But I don't know. Nick, do you have any guidance on that?
Good question. We have seen it a couple times where the fee does get reduced slightly based on, you know, staff analysis, but it's generally like pretty small, like maybe like 5%. A substantial decrease, I have personally never heard of happening. That would be pretty strange.
I guess I'm just wondering if we decided not to do the phased, we could change it at some time.
We can always look at the study, we can look at the level of service. I mean, that's what it really comes down to, is the level of service we want to provide as we grow.
I was just thinking, if we decided that was a fair assessment, that we would want that, we would want it when we wanted it, or when it was supposed to be given instead of phased. It's just something I was thinking about.
Mayor, may I comment?
Please.
I would like to point out that especially under the incremental expansion approach that has been taken for a majority of these departments, is that the maximum supportable fee calculated based off of that is saying, this is the fee level that is necessary at this point in time to continue to maintain that level of service. And adopting fees at a lower amount than that means that additional dollars would need to come in from other sources, such as general fund revenue or grants and so on and so forth, in order to make up for that gap in the level of service that would be provided by those fees.
But that's if we phase.
Yes, if you phase. We're acknowledging that we know it costs, we're going to need the next 1,000 homes, we know we're going to need another X amount of park acres, but we're going to adopt fees that won't get us there. So our park crowding will be greater, or we know we need X miles of pathway or X portion of police equipment or fire. We're intentionally saying, we know we need it, but we're not going to put it on the new folks.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman Schreiber.
Yeah, since we're in deliberation, I'll go ahead and share my point of view on this. Originally, I was pretty open to the phased approach because it does seem like a pretty drastic increase in fees, but for the reason that you kind of just articulated, that if we can all agree that this is the correct amount where growth pays for growth, it seems to me that going directly to the full amount is the correct conclusion. Otherwise, we are going to be subsidizing new growth with the existing residents.
Thank you for your comments and deliberation. Other deliberation?
May I ask, add additional comment for deliberation? I agree with your comments, Counselor Schreiber, with the exception that I think we've got to go understand that the inputs into this process came from our 10-year master plan, basically pulsing the community of what they would want to go see, without any understanding of what the cost impacts are to the city and to themselves. So in that environment, it's very easy for everybody to say, I want this, I want this, I want this, because at that point, it's all free. Once the rubber meets the road and there's a cost impact to citizens, I believe that list would shrink. And so I actually think what's in that master plan is a little bit overinflated. And so from that perspective, I think the phased approach actually is the better approach. I think jumping to the maximum, I think we're going to find out that we're not going to have the ability to fund that level from the city's perspective. And again, it's, I think what's in that master plan is a bit unrealistic, again, because there is no expectation or understanding of the costs at that point. So that'd be my counter to maybe jumping directly to the full amount.
You don't think in eight to 11 years?
Thank you, Councilman Howard. I just want to bring it up for your discussion, and interesting, that brings up an interesting thought in my mind. So with the exception of the streets plan, everything is incremental. So if we get $100,000 of impact fees, we build for pathways, we build $100,000 for pathways. So there's a one-to-one correlation there, and that maintains our current level of service pathways per 1,000 people or 10,000, whatever it may be. The road, street transportation element is plan-based, and I think that's the one that maybe you're most accurate in describing that way. And I guess the question is, for Nick, have you ever seen the fees adopted by category at percentages? So what I'm getting at is, could we do 100% of the parks, police, fire, and pathways, and maybe a 75% of the roads this year, and break them out that way?
I have never seen that, and I would, just being conservative, I would caution against doing that, just because of, you know, kind of the same approach where we recommended, if, you know, you're doing the phased approach, you know, 75% of the fee, it should apply to all land uses. I would say conservatively, the same principle should apply to the individual, you know, aspects of the fee as well.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman Schreiber.
I did have one thought along that same conversation, that I agree that our master plans need to be revisited, and each of those projects will come before council before we actually move on any of them. And there is always the mechanism that if we don't spend those fees, that they could just be returned, so.
And again, that CIP could change, as long as there's a equivalent proportionality that it is offsetting or meeting the vehicle trips projected in that demand of the new Other council deliberation? Council, is there a motion? You suggested a motion in your staff report, I believe.
I would move to initiate the impact fees at a 100% level.
Second?
Motion by President Rule, seconded by Schreiber. Any discussion?
May I ask if I need to put in amendment to say the listed projects do not constitute a mandate for the city to undertake? Is that something that could be added?
You can ask, but I can tell you that that CIP and those projects will come to the council one by one for you to determine if they are appropriate. I think it's unnecessary, but I'd leave it to maybe Zach to provide any advice on that amendment or addition.
I think that that amendment would overcomplicate things. I'll leave that, I could explain further if you'd like.
Any other discussion or deliberation? If not, this will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Spurrow?
No.
Counselor Dick?
No.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
No.
Mr. Mayor, that is a tie. You will need to vote to break the tie.
I vote yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Budget workshop, we will now proceed. Thank you, Nicholas, appreciate all your time and effort and the Tischler Bice team on this.
Of course. Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Good night. We'll now proceed with our budget workshop and a review of department budgets. We'll begin with the police department, and I will now yield the floor to Chief Kuhn. And before you start, Chief Kuhn, I just want to pass along to the council, I have had an unbelievable amount of positive feedback about our police department in the last three weeks. Everything from the events to the fourth to other things. So I just want to take this moment to thank the chief for the exceptional job he and our police are doing for this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, council and mayor. We're going to start our budget workshop with a PowerPoint slide like we did last Wanted to show the budget calendar of where this starts back in February, and we're pretty much three-fourths of the way all the way down to that second, third green line in there. One thing I did want to point out, that this year, we did want to try to do the fees ahead of the budget so that we could wrap in what was adopted by council. However, we had the impact fees, which we heard tonight, and then other fee increases that we wanted to wrap into that, so we've actually delayed that from this initial budget or initial estimated calendar to actually come to you next, I think, next council meeting. So you will see that with what you guys just adopted in that fee schedule. And the next dates that we have slated from last week, we have tonight is the budget workshop for department divisions and citywide revenues. And then on the July 30th is a tentative approval of the fiscal '26 revenue expenses and schedule a public hearing. And August 6th is another budget workshop with discussions and changes. And then last but not least is August 20th, if the budgets hearing is scheduled for that date, that's when we would have it, and then the adoption of the ordinance. The budget timing, I just wanted to point out a few things that, due to timing of why this is when it is, and one is the intergovernmental state revenue sharing projections normally are not released... One is the intergovernmental state revenue sharing projections normally are not released until mid-May. This is a large portion of the general fund. It's about twelve percent of the general fund. And without having these, it is, it can make a significant difference in the general fund budget. In addition to that, we have property tax levy calculations that the final new construction rolls, they are not released until. The third Monday in July. In fact, we haven't even got them yet. We get the initial ones normally the first week of July. And the last, at the last meeting, we hadn't even received those. So you will see a new. This in front of you because we did receive those and they are projected. I always project those high because when we. Go out and release this, we can never go then below that, or we can never go above that amount. So I project those high. So you will see. That our revenue here has changed due to the initial preliminary construction rolls. And then when they come in, they usually come in right around the same amount, but it's, a lot of times there are some adjustments that come into those. And the last one, not least, we, we do not receive the final taxable valuation until the first Monday in August. That is the last piece that will dictate how much we can levy for property taxes. So. These, the, these three things are pretty major things in the general fund to, we, we, we can't finalize anything until we get all that stuff. So. Just I guess ending on last week's meeting is that there are several things we can get done before other, other funds, water fund, the. Waste water fund, some other, the CIP, we can talk through all that, but general fund really does wait till. Pretty much the very end to really finalize everything. Tonight, we're going to be doing the department division budgets. The police will start, then we have community planning and development, public works, and then we have the citywide revenue sources, and we will start. With police.
So I apologize for missing last week, so I'm not sure how the, how you guys went through it. So.
Brutal. Brutal. Hope you're ready for the hot seat.
I'm ready. After last week, I'm ready for a, to go back to work. I prepared a pretty thick booklet for, for staff within it. I'm not sure if everybody had the opportunity to, to read through it or go through it. If not, jump in and read some of it. Some of it's some highlights that the police department's accomplished over the last year. Some of it's related to some goals and objectives we have, and then there's some, just some basic statistics. That kind of, kind of go in it, but towards the back of it is when it gets into kind of some of the budgeting stuff. One thing to note in that book, booklet that you saw. Is that some of our staffing levels. We're not changing our staffing level, but we're changing. Our rank and file. So if you look at that, we've done kind of a reorganization. We're kind of looking at what are the best needs for the, the police department and the city for today with Captain Bailey's retirement. And we've elected not to promote a captain. We're going to use some of those funds rolling back down. Promote some of our patrol officers into sergeants, train up to our next level of supervisors for the future. And so we've started, we have actually started that program right now, and we've been working on that. So if you, if you're not aware, we have twenty six total employees in the. Within the police department, twenty one of those are sworn. That includes the chief on down to the patrol, the patrol officer. We have three community resource officers. They do all of our parking, animals, snow removal, those type of. Some ordinance complaints. Is what they cover. We have one evidence tech and one senior police officer. That kind of wraps up kind of who and how many we have. In there, there's the org chart that kind of shows a flow of it. Vehicles always is a hot topic within the police department. It seems like we have a lot of vehicles. Several years ago, just to kind of update the council, one of the things we did instead of. Giving out raises, we were looking for ways that we could retain and keep officers. We went with a take home car program. Which is, it does cost the city some money, but the value we found in, in retaining our employees from that, I think way well outweighs it. One of the things that we've been working on is moving towards some hybrids. I think we're up to five total hybrids now. The positive about that is when you look at our budget, we're actually seeing a decrease in our cost of fuel. Which is something that we're excited. This year, you're going to see in our budget that we do have another vehicle budgeted for. Our goal is to pick up another hybrid, put that into the fleet and get one of the ones, get rid of one that is costing us more, more money. So just kind of a really high level overview, then you can ask. Questions. When you get into that, one of the things I think is really interesting to, when we talk about the budget, we're about three point nine millions where we're at. The important part of that, and I think it probably goes with all of our departments, is almost ninety percent of that goes to employees' wages and benefits. So of that huge number, we look at that and we think, wow, that's a lot of stuff we're buying things with. And it's really not the case. I think it's eighty eight or somewhere in there, eighty seven percent actually goes to, to wages. Our wages increase for this upcoming budget for. For a cost is only about fifty thousand dollars. When you look at that next line item in there, you're going to see the. Benefit package goes up by almost a hundred and forty thousand and some change, which is a huge, a huge increase. So almost. I'll say roughly almost two hundred thousand dollars of our increase is going into employees to help, to help maintain and keep them. Just to highlight some of the other items, instead of going line by line that we're looking at, our radios, you're going to notice there's about sixty thousand dollars budgeted for radios. For our portable radios that we carry, they're well past their life expectancy. Probably by, probably by ten years. We need new radios. That's about sixty thousand dollars. The body worn cameras that you see the officers wear, their end of life. We've had our system fail twice in the last month for retaining stuff. They're no longer supporting. Supporting them. So that's another seventy thousand dollars. Some of the things, instead of going back to servers and hard drives, some of that stuff that we're going to be putting out will be. Looking at using the cloud, utilizing the cloud to save us some costs and some storage here at the city and some, some fees in there. Drone, you're going to see an increase for a drone. There's a six, seven thousand dollar increase for a drone. One of the things that we don't have that we often use, and we, we can't, we actually have one of our officers that is licensed to fly. He comes out and when we need it for crime scenes, we'll fly it for us, or we contract, or we bring the county in to fly us. So we're looking at a. A, a, we'll say a cheaper model, the one that could be effective enough to get up, get some bird's eye views, so we can get some photos of some crime scenes and some of those things. The vehicle's in there for sixty thousand. You're going to see a, a small increase for uniforming. Of course, everything's going up, uniforms going up. Travel and training went up because of those costs. Just standard costs are going up. We really tried to keep it within the budget that we had. And keep our impact down low, but you, you do see that we did have a small increase, and that's really where those increases are coming from. And I'll just stop there. Do you guys have questions, or do you guys want to go line by line?
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind.
Go ahead, Councilman Dick.
So Corey, I know we're, we're very early on in the parking management. Program and where we're going and what the fees and, you know, what type of service we're going to be looking at. How do you feel if you're not increasing the amount of staff that you have going into parking management here with the three community resource officers that you have?
You know, that's a really great question. That's one thing we staffed this morning in the department meeting is kind of what, what does that program look like? How are we going to implement it? What staffing levels is it going to take? And I, and, and the, the mayor Jason can add to it, but I really think we're really early on. And not knowing the, the depths of what it's going to take. My hope would be is with those three. And technology that we'll be able to cover it without any concerns. I, the company that we currently use. Has, along with several other companies, but with the ability to do. QR codes for scanning license plate readers and some of those things. The hope is to really maintain with those level of staffing. With the three, but until we get in the midst of it and actually break it down, I don't have a great answer.
Yeah, and Councilman Dick, we, we just set up our first meeting to start working on that with Corey, with Jason, with Holly, myself. We'll be looking at a variety of technologies, some of which are completely frictionless. You drive in, it scans your car, you show your pass, whatever, it starts the timer. If you choose not to pay, it sends you a ticket in the mail, just like you'd get in a big city.
And the third party would actually send it. It's not somebody from the city?
I, I, I will.
We don't know.
We get, we got to get some sales pitches from these companies and writers.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Howard.
Maybe the first question for Sarah, and then I'll come to Police Chief. So. Police Chief, you said increases for phones, cameras and drones in the packet that you gave us, Sarah. Is that consolidated under account forty six fifteen operational supplies? Because we just see a big increase in that line item. I presume that's where it's.
Yes.
Okay, captured in there.
Forty six fifty, or yeah, forty six ten, forty six fifteen.
Yep. Okay, thank you. And then Police Chief. Historically, each, each year you do a budget. And, and the, again, the packet that I've got here shows us the actual, it didn't show me the budget for the prior years, but how closely, when you budget, how closely does your actual hit? So let's say you budgeted three million dollars last year. Well, actually, what you budgeted last year was three point five five, five million, right?
Three point six.
Yep, three point six. How, how, how close did the actual spending come to what you budgeted?
That's a great question. I don't remember what my actual spending was last year. Do you have the actuals? When you look.
So for twenty four, it was three million, two hundred. I do not have the budget for twenty four in front of me. The, what we, what you should have in front of you in this new packet here, the detail has the actual for twenty three, twenty four, and then a budget for twenty five, twenty six.
So you said actual spending in twenty four is three point two?
Yeah.
Against a budget of three point six?
Oh, yeah. Well, the twenty, that's the twenty twenty five, so we're looking back as a twenty twenty four.
Okay.
So the actual is from twenty twenty four, and I don't have what the actual budget was for that year, but this.
That's the general question for actually all of our departments. If we budget a number, are we always underspending?
That hopefully is the goal.
The answer, for the, for the police department, the answer is yes.
Okay.
We've never, since I've been the chief, we've never been over that number, and we usually come pretty close to. Being on it.
And I guess the, the question I'm trying to derive was, let's say we budgeted a number and we're always. Twenty percent below it. It doesn't sound like that's the case. We're much closer to the actual budget, but if we were twenty percent, then I'd come in and say, okay, Sarah.
I, that, that is the yes.
But that, I think that would be useful information for all of us to say, okay, here's what they budgeted, here's what the actual. If we're within three, four, five, six percent, great, right? If that gap is bigger, then I would come back to you and say, hey, Sarah, I think we can cut some more out of our budgets. But I, but I don't have that information to give me that kind of a perspective right now. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, President Rule.
I think some of the confusion, because we do have actuals for twenty three, twenty four, but we don't have an actual because we're not done with twenty four, twenty five.
Correct, yeah.
Right, so you can't give us an exact number because we're not there yet.
But do we know that what was budgeted in those years? So I see the actuals, but what, what did we budget?
Budgeted in twenty two.
Oh, I hear what you're saying is, is in those years, actual budget as compared to actual, so.
Yeah, we can get those numbers. I don't have them in front of me right now, but we, I mean, that's all part of the audit, and that's all part of that detail that's out there. So. It's all on our OpenGov or the ClearGov site and everything. So I can just point you maybe where you can find that at if you need.
Or between now and our final decision to approve the budget, it would maybe be good to see historically the last two or three years, how are we doing actuals against the budget? For the total city would be just an interesting percentage.
I know for the P D, that's easy, that's easy to run and find out. Okay.
I'll show you where that's at.
Thank you.
And there, and Councilman Howard, there are some general safeguards in our software. That as you approach or begin to, God forbid you exceed, there's red flags and flashing bulbs, and Sarah watches that as well as the directors.
Kind of like the street lights, it turns yellow first and then it turns.
Yeah, and if anyone ever went over their budget, we'd be discussion, that's for sure.
Thank you. No, no other questions.
Anyone else for the police chief questions?
Just a couple of questions. I'm not aware of any situations where you guys had to use your long rifles. And any situations this year? Okay, awesome. My question was for just the protection of the officers, but the, if you guys have silencers or not, I wasn't familiar with.
We, we do not. We've looked at them, and we've looked at the costs, and we've weighed some pros and cons about doing it.
Right.
And with. With the cost, we haven't, we, what we've done this year is we focused more on our handguns and going to red dots.
Right.
Versus the, the silencers for the rifles. So we've kind of said, yes, that's important. But we feel it's more important to get the, the sights on the handguns first. And so last year, we actually put some of our money towards. We outfitted six of them with dots, and our goal this year is to finish outfitting with, with the money that we have budgeted for, for dots.
Dots are much better than dots.
Yes, yes, especially the older I get.
All right. Go ahead, Councilman Trevor.
Yeah, thanks. You know, looking at the salaries and wages, like you said, that's the biggest part of the whole budget. It did strike me that it's gone up about. Napkin calculation about twenty five percent from the twenty three actuals to this year's budget. Does that represent, I mean, obviously, there's going to be a cost of living increase for, for everyone, as there should be. Does that represent additional people in your department?
I'm not twenty twenty three.
No, there's been.
No.
You, actually, I can show you where to find those line items in the budget. There is a tab that's called Personnel Services that actually lists out every department and how they've changed over the last eight years. So that is in your, in your online packet.
So that, so that twenty five percent increase just represents. Officers who are working their way up in their career and therefore earning more money?
Yeah, and I, and I was trying to think if it was twenty twenty two or twenty twenty three, we did a wage study for the police department, and we had a large increase. And I don't remember, we'd have to go back and look at what year. I don't remember if it was twenty two or twenty three, but the one year the, the city handed out a, a. A nice increase for the police department. I think it was eight percent or something to try to meet some of the market stuff, so.
Okay.
And I can't remember what year that was, though, but I could look and email you with it.
Sure. And I don't mean to pick on your department. It's just.
Well, that's okay.
You're one of the few that hasn't had an organizational change, so it's actually easy to compare the numbers, whereas a lot of the other people aren't even in the same department anymore.
Yeah, no, it's absolutely okay. I'll look it, I'll look it up in CINDIA when the, those adjustments were made.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, I think that's it for you, chief. Congratulations. I think we're going to move on to Holly next. Does that, do I have that right?
I think actually Jason.
Jason, yes. Whoever wants to.
While they are coming up, I wanted to bring up, show you in the budget book where that personnel, so underneath the executive summary. In the budget book, you can see that we have a strategic plan that's in there. That's the city that adopted one that they have us through, I think, twenty seven. The long, short term, long term budget timeline, and then here is the personnel changes. So you can see here how they've changed. So there was one additional police officer added. Back in twenty two. So that's just a. Where you can find that at.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman.
May I just say thank you to Sarah because. She makes it look so easy to find everything, and I appreciate it because. Yeah, I appreciate it.
And I, I want to thank Sarah and all of you because one of my goals was to, you know, you, you've, you've all displayed an enormous. Interest and deep dive into the budget, and that was certainly, I'm glad to see that because I want you to all understand. The budget, and Sarah's put a lot of time in. I know you've met with department heads, so thanks, everyone.
Okay. Thank you again. I echo the mayor's comments there. It's been really. Rewarding to see the council's engagement in the budget process this year. We're going to start with Community Planning and Development Administration. So the CPD department has five divisions within it. Last week, we looked at the building and the planning divisions. Tonight, we're going to look at the three other divisions, the CPD admin and parks and recreation. So CPD admin is kind of an umbrella division that oversees administration of the entire CD, CPD department or. Multiple divisions within the CPD department. For salaries and wages in this division, we're seeing a significant decrease this year. There, there is, there are two fewer positions this year than there were a year ago in the CPD admin division. We had the Arts Culture Historic Preservation Planner position previously, and we had a Parks and Planning Development Manager. Those two positions are being proposed to be removed. Therefore, the, the salaries and wages are decreasing by around. Almost a hundred thousand dollars in the CPD admin division. The remaining salaries being paid out of this division are a portion of my salary. Of course, the other portions of my salary come out of the four other divisions that I oversee. And the salary of our CPD admin assistant, Mandy Brown. So you can see that that salary and wage. Line item has decreased significantly. Other than salaries and wages, we don't have a whole lot else in this budget. There are some big numbers, but there's a really easy explanation for those. So we'll start with the smaller numbers. We have twenty five thousand dollars in the budget for. Purchased professional services specifically around an ADA transition plan. This is something that we are long overdue to develop at the city. It's required by the Americans with Disabilities Act. And we have a building official who has some. And we have a, um, building official who has some great qualifications around ADA, but we do, um, anticipate needing a consultant, so we have twenty five thousand dollars in the budget to help us. Uh, rework our ADA transition plan to bring us into compliance with federal requirements. Um, additionally, we have, um, a little bit for, uh, professional development, training and travel, that's for any conferences that I may attend as the CPD Ad, um, Director. Um, we also have two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, very large number. This is for SURA-funded arts projects, so the Arts, Culture, Historic Preservation is, is within the CPD Admin Division. It's not part of parks, it's not part of recreation, it's kind of its own little thing within CPD Admin. So that very large number of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, one hundred thousand of that comes from the, uh, Sandpoint Urban Renewal Agency North, and a hundred and fifty. Comes from the Sandpoint, uh, Urban Renewal Agency Downtown. There's an additional twenty thousand in the budget, um, that's not money that exists, it is in the budget because the ACHP Commission has a long history of applying for grants. So historically, we put some money in the budget so that if ACHP pursues any grants, we have the, the ju- justification for spending that money. So, um, that very large number of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, I wanted to make it very clear that that's, um, money that is not, and I don't have any plans for spending that right away, that would depend on the, uh. Direction of the, um, Urban Renewal Agency Board and input from the Arts and Culture Historic Preservation Commission. One example is the Silver Box Art Projects, um, Downtown Revitalization Phase Three is certainly going to inc- incorporate quite a bit of, um, art, culture, sort of wayfinding, place making. And some of the, the funding for that could come out of that two hundred, or that, I should say, the one hundred and fifty thousand coming from Downtown Urban Renewal. So I will answer any questions about the CPD Admin Budget if you have them at this time.
Councilmembers?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Trevor.
Yeah, on that same subject that you were just speaking on, um, are those solely for arts types projects, or would.
They are.
So say the, the Great Northern Road Project wouldn't be part of that?
SURA, SURA dedicates, is it two percent of their collections, I believe, to public art? And that's divided between the North and the Southern District, and, uh, the Arts Commission basically oversees those and makes, uh, proposals to SURA. And it runs through this budget. So that's the revenue generally coming from SURA that they dedicate to art projects.
Perfect, just art projects, thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Jason.
Are there other art projects besides the ones that go out on the boxes?
Uh, there, there have been several in the past, the, the Graffiti Alley was a SURA-funded project.
Okay.
Um.
The Roundabout up north.
Yeah, the, the Homshire and the Roundabout, that would be, would have been SURA North, up at Schweitzer Cut Off.
Okay.
All the public art downtown.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah, and, and there are, there should be some great opportunities as we move into design for Downtown Revitalization Phase Three to find ways to spend some of that money, um, to incorporate. Art into the, the street and sidewalk improvements we do on First Avenue in the next year.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you, Council, Jason, you want to move on to your next?
Here, why don't you, uh, Government Building and Grounds? Can you pull that up, please? Okay, another, uh, I forgot to mention this in my intro, we also have the Government Building and Grounds Division, which is part of CPD. Um, this is, you could consider this kind of a subdivision of the Parks Department. It's, it's, it's Parks Maintenance Workers who also oversee maintenance of our government buildings, this includes, um, Community Hall, City Hall, and the City Shop, basically, and any other city, uh, facilities like the. Parks, uh, Shop Facility at City Beach, the, the Park Shop Facility at Traverse Park, and so on. So we, we do pay a portion of our Parks Maintenance Crew salaries out of the government buildings and grounds, you can see that's the sixty one thousand dollars you see for salary and wages. Um, and we have a couple of big items in here that I'll point out. Um, Councilwoman Duquette emailed me today asking what the seventy thousand dollars, how that breaks down. I believe I looked into it, we have fifty thousand dollars for custodial services at City Hall and twenty, uh, fifteen thousand dollars for custodials, sorry, fifty five thousand dollars for custodial services at City Hall. And fifteen thousand dollars for custodial services at Community Hall. So we pay seventy thousand dollars a year, and I did look back at actuals, and well, you can see right there, we spent sixty eight thousand, six hundred dollars in twenty twenty four on custodial services, so. Um, responding to your question to the Police Chief, I, I've actually done a lot of digging into our budget and we, we built our budget around what our actuals were. We don't just choose the same number every year and then try to spend up to that, we look at how much we spent, and if we came in significantly below what was budgeted, there's no need to budget. So I think you'll find that throughout the city's budget, Sarah does a really good job of that, the department heads are doing a really good job of making sure we're not putting money in that we don't need. So that's an example of that, you can see we actually spent sixty six thousand dollars last year, um, we don't know where we're gonna land this year, but we have seventy thousand budgeted for next year. Um, the other big item in here, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah, but, um, Councilwoman Duquette asked about the hundred thousand dollars for, um, capital improvements, is that the fire alarm system?
Yes.
Yeah, so that is, there's a hundred thousand dollars for capital construction services in the government buildings and grounds, and that's for a fire alarm system in City Hall, which we discovered we do not have.
And so my question, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilwoman Duquette.
That's the same that's on this one-time budget, it's not duplicated, it's the same thing. Okay. It is on here, that's why I wondered why it was on his also, I just wondered if it was doubled.
No.
And I could have a hundred percent.
Nope.
Damn.
I wish.
Okay, if you have any questions about government buildings and grounds, feel free to ask.
Councilmembers?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Howard.
Um, Jason, just real quick, can you, um, articulate why or how you were able to reduce temporary wages from. Last year to this year in your new budget, almost thirty thousand dollars?
That's a good question, I, is that a, go ahead, Sarah.
So here, the parks employees, they work between the parks and also government buildings, the hundred percent of their wages is split between that. Every year I do an analysis and look at it, so I reduce the percentage, and I put it up in the parks, you'll see the park percentage.
Thank you, so it's not actually a, a real reduction, it's just a real allocation.
Okay, thank you.
For the record, I would have answered very similar, so. Thank you, Sarah. Any other questions about government buildings and grounds? Okay, why don't we move on to parks? Okay, so, um, you, you know this, we, we have around eighty eight acres of parks, ranging in size, tiny parks, huge parks. Um, in addition to maintaining our public park spaces, those eighty eight acres, um, the actual acreage of, of city property maintained by the Parks Division is far more than that, because we also maintain miles of pathways. So all pathways that aren't, um, part of a street, for example, the Division, um, Pathway i- is, is not, I believe that's maintained by street crews, but the. Um, actually, other pathways, the, the Pine Street Pathway is also maintained by the street crew, the Sandpoint to Dover Pathway, that's a corridor maintained by the Parks Crew. Um, the, uh, Sand Creek Pathway, uh, in the ITD Right Of Way along Sand Creek, that's maintained by the Parks Crew. Um, Downtown Streetscapes are maintained by the Parks Crews, the street, the street trees, the planter boxes, um, the, the stormwater retention swales, things like that, we also maintain the. Uh, the, the Fifth Avenue, um, Pathway in front of all the, the commercials spaces on the west side of Fifth, there is maintained by the Parks Crew. Um, our Parks Crew maintains a lot of public space in the city, and we also plow a lot, all of those pathways, and then we plow several city lots as well, city parking lots, um, including the entire City Beach Parking Lot, so. The, Sarah, Holly might be correcting me there, that might be streets, it does, West, do you do City Beach, or is that Parks? That's Parks, okay, that's right, so, um, this is a, a big division, we have six full-time, year-round employees when we're fully staffed, and a, five or six part-time employees in this, in the summer, so you can see the full-time wages. Um, around three hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year in part-time wages, there's that increase, Councilman Howard, um, where Sarah al- allocated some of that building division. Um, part-time wages to, back to parks, so total, uh, salary benefits, six hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars to, um, provide salary benefits for twelve employees, year-round and seasonal. Um, we have a really, and by the way, I had a staff update prepared for you tonight, and the number one thing I wanted to, um, s- share in that staff update was just a huge shout out to our Parks Maintenance Crews. Um, after the storm yesterday and the night before, our parks were a mess, I went down and did a tour, we had a tree come down in the RV Park, just narrowly missed a, an actual camper parked there. Um, we had debris all over the City Beach, we had one of our log booms became unmoored and was drifting out into the marina, our Parks Crews were on it, they were out in the boats today. They cleaned up those parks, and now they are a hundred percent back to normal, and they've turned their attention back to their other parks projects. In addition to, um, just maintaining our parks and operating our parks, we, we mow tens of acres, almost a hundred acres of grass around the city. Um, we also do parks projects in the Parks Division, so parks capital improvement projects. Examples, uh, just today, the, the Parks Guys, I spoke with Austin to get some clarification on some budget items this afternoon, the Parks Guys were building a, um, uh, they're framing out a retaining wall to pour a concrete wall for the new batting cages. They determined that to support our new beautiful batting cages, which have, which are being installed soon at Traverse Park, we had to build a concrete retaining wall, we have two concrete professionals on our Parks Team. So that, that's the kind of savings we can realize, um, they are going to build the concrete, um, pad for the picnic shelter, which you had previously approved to contract, or Gino Four, we determined we can save. A lot of money by having our talented Parks Crews do that, two of these guys are experienced con- uh, concrete contractors, one of whom we stole from Dream, Dreamland Skate Parks, he was on the skate park crew, he was so good, he enjoyed. The Parks Guys, that he came and worked for us, so we've got professional concrete workers on this team. So really proud of our Parks Maintenance Crew, um, this is the budget that pays their salaries and their wages. Um, in addition, we have, I want to highlight some of the other, um, items in here, we have some technical services that we pay for, uh, two big ones that you'll notice are invasive species mitigation, that's forty thousand dollars. I'll talk about that briefly, that is an annual contract that we outsource the, uh, mitigation of aquatic invasive weeds. At City Beach, at the Windbag, in City Beach Marinas, and in the, uh, Sand Creek Corridor. You've all seen it, it's a pontoon, it's got a little scuba flag on the back, and that, that's a way that we have managed to avoid using chemicals to mitigate invasive aquatic weeds at our, uh, public waterways, so it's a big line item, um. Uh, I asked, I asked Austin today, because I knew you'd want to know about this, what would happen if we stopped doing that, he said, well, either the weeds would come back, or for about three hundred dollars a year, we could use chemicals to treat all those. So this was a decision made by previous council to move away from the, the chemical treatment of our weeds and move towards a more manual, uh, way to mitigate our weeds. So it is expensive, um, we have been doing it for many years now, um, but I wanted to just explain what that was for. Um, we also have arborist services and urban forestry, uh, that, we have twenty thousand dollars in the budget for that, plus. Five thousand dollars for, uh, turf, ground, tree, and planting supplies, so we have around twenty five thousand dollars for, um, tree maintenance. And possibly tree replacement as well, I know there was a question from, uh, Mayor Logan last time about tree, um, money for trees in the budget, there is money for trees in the budget, if we don't use all this for tree maintenance, is, it, it's justified to use for replacing street trees that have. Either died or, or are imminently going to die, so about twenty five thousand dollars for trees in the Parks Division budget. Um, Councilwoman Duquette, you asked some great questions today, thank you so much, one of them was, what was the difference between the thirty thousand, eight hundred dollars for garbage services? And the, uh, nineteen thousand, three hundred seventy-five dollars for multipurpose waste disposal? Well, that's an easy one, I clicked on a few links in our, on our, uh, software, and I found that wastes pub, uh, multipurpose waste dis- disposal is a euphemism for porta potties. So, we, we maintain dozens, dozens of porta potties across our city parks. Um, I do remember years and years ago, I was in Kim Woodruff's office, and he said, most of my job is managing other people's. And by that, he meant I'm constantly managing the, uh, dozens of porta potties that we use. Um, just for comparison, a single, um, a single toilet facility could cost upwards of a quarter million dollars in, in a park to have all the plumbing run, get the utility hookups, and build an actual restroom facility. So in the long run, it's quite a bit cheaper to use porta potties, um, although, we, we are looking at places where we could put permanent restrooms in our parks, including at the RV Park this year, which could serve a dual purpose for City Beach goers as well. So that's what that, uh, the difference between those two is. Um, let's look at, um, a couple of other items, we've got operational supplies and equipment. Um, fifty one thousand, three hundred dollars, and you can see the actuals for the last few years have ranged from fifty seven thousand dollars to seventy nine thousand dollars to fifty one thousand in the budget this year. Um, I, I went back and looked at invoices, there are literally hundreds of invoices, um, that are included in, in that line item, this is typically the things our Parks Guys are running to South Fork Hardware, to North Forty, to Home Depot, a plumbing supply company, and electrical supply company. This is the, these are the, the, um, the, the veins and the arteries of our park system that are paid for out of that budget, so these guys can, like I said, they do plumbing, they do irrigation, they do landscaping, they do concrete work. Uh, this pays for things like, um, uh, asphalt, this pays for things like concrete, this pays for sod, when we need to sod a section of, of a sports field, or in, like, right now, we're sodding the east side of the skate park, this will come out of operational supplies and equipment. So i- it, it's really everything we, we, we put into our parks on an annual basis comes out of that fifty one thousand dollars, and much of what we put into our parks comes out of that. Okay, finally, I'm going to talk about the fifty five thousand dollars in the capital equipment and machinery section. Um, we do replace our, our, uh, parks, um, equipment on a fairly regular basis, of course, they have, it has a life cycle, this is a, a twenty-year-old. John Deere tractor that is going to be replaced with hopefully a, a newer Kubota. Um, the, and when I pushed Austin on this today, I said, how essential is it that we replace this tractor? And he said, well, we can keep going with the, with the old John Deere, but it keeps leaking oil, and if it leaks oil on the turf field, we're in for a, a more expensive repair. So he's, he's, he said, we could probably make it work for one more year, but, um, this tractor has a, a twenty years under its, under its pillars, maybe it was twelve years or something, it's an old tractor, it's, it's needed a lot of maintenance recently. Um, so this was the, the big capital purchase that he was requesting this year to, to replace that depreciated John Deere with a, with a newer tractor, more capable of, of plowing and maintaining our, our multiple parks. So that kind of wraps up the Parks Division, uh, so, sorry, the Parks Maintenance Budget, there's a whole other part of Parks as well, which is Parks Capital. So Parks Maintenance comes out of the General Fund, that's the zero-one, um, budget, and then we have the Parks Capital Improvement, uh, which covers, um. I, I went through it, we've got, uh, funds to maintain and equip the, the Snack Shack at City Beach, the RV Park. So you have eighteen hundred dollars for just replacing old equipment at the Snack Shack, twenty nine, twenty eight thousand, nine hundred dollars to maintain and operate the RV Park. Um, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for grant matches, that's for our RV Fund Grant and the, um, the City Beach Parking Lot Grant that we have been offered. Uh, the Memorial HVAC System needs a seventy five thousand dollar upgrade next year, uh, Memorial Field Turf Replacement, we're setting aside sixty two thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars to eventually replace that, it's going to be about a million and a half dollars in about ten years, we're going to have to have. Um, software for operating our parks, um, is ninety six hundred dollars, uh, we have three hundred thousand dollars of parkland purchase, we discussed that a couple of weeks ago, and then, uh, park, other park projects. Um, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and I just, I, I made a little list of the high priority park projects next year, a big one is, is, is upgrading our irrigation at, um. The Traverse Park and Centennial Fields, uh, the irrigation there was installed in nineteen eighty-four, when the park was converted from a landfill, and it is constantly failing, we have cracked pipes everywhere. Um, Austin estimates that'll be around a twenty-five to thirty thousand dollar project, just to upgrade the irrigation at, at that sports complex. Um, looking at our Parks Capital Improvement Plan, which you adopted an hour ago, uh, we've got some, some short-term projects, including, uh, the Playground at Hickory Park, that's one that the, uh, Parks. Um, Commission has prioritized as something that needs attention, um, basketball court resurfacing. And painting, dog park planning and design, and improvements to the Ponderay Bay Trailhead, so what are we planning to do with the hundred and fifty thousand for Parks Capital, uh, a Parks Master Plan identified projects? Those are some of the priority projects as identified by a Parks Commission, so I wanted to share that as well.
Uh, Jason, just for an update, the tractor has a hundred and twenty-five thousand miles on it.
That's a lot of miles for a tractor.
I asked the second question, and it said it looks pretty new, and he said, it's sixteen years old.
Yeah, sixteen years old, thank you.
It's a lot of miles driving around our view.
You can't have oil leaking around the water.
No, or on a, or on a million-dollar turf field, that's another place you don't want those leaking. Yeah.
Any questions for Director Welker on the Parks Capital Improvement?
Mr. Mayor, may I just comment, um, your Parks Guys are amazing.
Yeah, they are.
Kudos all the time, I'm down there a lot, they helped me with the recycle bins, I watched all the garbage they have to deal with early in the morning after. People, and just everything, and they're just pleasant and willing to help always.
Yeah.
And seventy thousand for hand pulling is well worth it, again, thank you for that one.
Um, yeah, Austin has been at the city for twenty-eight years.
He's amazing, I don't know what we're gonna do without him.
And he is set to retire in November this year, so.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, very sad.
Harry.
So any, any questions about the Parks Capital Improvement Budget, I'm happy to answer.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Trevor.
I see three hundred thousand for park property purchase.
We talked a little bit about that last week, um, there's actually closer to a million in the budget for Parks Property Purchase, but. Three hundred thousand of that is, is set to come from this, the Park CIP Fund.
Ah.
And we discussed that last week, there was an additional three hundred thousand from development impact fees maybe, and then some more money from the Urban Renewal North. If we choose to proceed with the Uni, Uni-Pacific Right Of Way Purchase. So that, again, that's one of those things we put in the budget every year, whether the council chooses to act on a parks land purchase next year is, is, it's up to the council. Whether the council chooses to act on a parks land purchase next year is is, it's up to the council. So you won't see me just going out and buying three hundred thousand worth of land without coming to the council.
Sure. Yeah, thanks for clarifying.
Yeah. Any other questions about parks? We have one more division. Uh, let's look at recreation. The Recreation Division, Sarah. Okay, so recreation, you're gonna see another significant decrease in the salaries and wages. As well as an even larger decrease in temporary wages. So let's start with the salary and wages. It's about a thirty-three percent decrease, I believe. I think I have the number there. This is accounted for by the fact that we are a smaller recreation division today than we were in the past. Um, we are not currently employing a recreation superintendent. That's a supervisor level position. I'm high-paid. Um, we've, we've moved away from that approach to recreation. I'd I'd say that we've um, we've transitioned from a service provider model to a facility provider model. And that's why our our staff in the recreation division now consists of a recreation facility supervisor. That's Ryan Wells, our J E R supervisor, who's also gonna support other recreation facilities in the city. Kami Ahmet, our longtime admin assistant, and of course, part of my salaries.
Jason, can I ask you to pause for a second? I I think I've I found the recreation programming uh by Jake. I'm looking for it. I think others are looking for that too.
I don't know.
Do you find this?
The combination of the recreation.
Oh, and James E. Russell.
The recreation, um, the James E. Russell Sports Center.
Okay, so it's combined. So what's on the screen is a combination of several of these. Okay, thank you.
Something to note is that last year, we individually put these on here, but really, when you think of it holistically, from a budget standpoint, it makes sense to have a division. So your detail is going to be here. And then also the thing I left in here uh up there for you guys tonight has the more and more detail than this one. Uh, but then in here is just the comprehensive all of recreation.
Thank you for clarifying. I was searching.
That is a great, um, in this um narrative, you can, you can scroll down here. And you can see not only which funds are coming from here. So this one here is coming from the Recreation Fund and then part of the Park Rec um Capital Improvement Fund. That was a building of the um James or J E R Center. And then when you go down farther, um, you can also see. Um, you can also ha- is also in most of them, and I will um why, oh, by division right there. So you can see I've scrolled too fast. We have the Recreation Program Division here and then the J E R in here too. So it is listed in here. It's just, um, yes, anyways. Thank you.
Hey, tracking. Just wanted to get the numbers tracking. So good.
So we we are seeing reductions in salaries and wages uh for both full-time and part-time due to the uh basically the reduction in the size of the Recreation Division and Recreation Superintendent. We also previously employed a Recreation Coordinator at the city until a couple of years ago. Um, that's now down to a Recreation Facility Supervisor and a Recreation Admin Assistant.
And and Jason, can you just add a little color? Um, I think they heard you, but really kind of tease out. You mentioned we're going from a a programming to a facility management.
I would describe it as that the the strategic pivot in the Recreation Division has been one from us a service provider to a facilities provider. And um, you know, it, I think COVID was a real turning point for recreation in the city. We saw an entire year where there were no city recreation programs. And during that time, um, lots of local organizations began offering some of the programs that were left un-unprovided by the city. Um, since then, the demand from those groups for field space, for court space, for um even access to the the beach and other facilities like that, the marina. Uh, we see a great partnership with Sandpoint Sandown Association, for example. Has has really, uh, I I have a little aside there that I'll share in a moment. But i- it's really allowed us to um kind of focus on what I would call our core competence in here, which is providing the best facilities in the area for those groups. So that when we um, when we saw change earlier this year in the Recreation Division, with the departure of our uh sports facility supervisor and our Recreation Superintendent, uh, the 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 path that the mayor decided to go on was one more of 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 this facility, um, providing the the best facilities in the area. So the the hiring of Ryan um was really intended to um turn our focus to managing those facilities for the community's benefit and for the use of those those groups. Now, I will say that um, what Ryan's working on right now at the Sports Center is, as you, as you learned a couple of weeks ago, a partnership with USTA PNW. Um, and I was also going to show you during my staff update today, a really cool video I want to show you. If you want to see it, uh, check out the Recreation, Sandpoint Recreation page on Facebook. Just yesterday, we had every single court at the Sports Center being used for youth programs. So we are offering programs. Yes, it's tennis programs right now, but the goal is for that facility to come closer to breaking even in the next six months to year. And that will actually free up some of these recreation funds to start bringing back some limited recreation programs outside of the James E. Russell Sports Center. So that's my personal goal for the division is for that facility to become more self-sufficient and for us to have more recreation uh revenues from that that four and a half percent tax allocation for recreation, so that we can um bring back some recreation programming that the private sector has not managed to provide. And there's quite a lot of that, as you all know. Some of you have heard it from the community. Um, there are things that we 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 were offering quite successfully that we don't have the the capacity to offer right now that we do hope to bring back in the next year.
And Jason, I just, the council knows there's, this wasn't uh an idea that struck Jason and I in the middle of the night. There's many other communities that run their their parks more as a facility, such as Haley. Uh, they primarily just run the facilities. So um, yeah, we'll see how it goes. It hats off to Ryan. That was impressive. See all those kids playing pickleball.
Um, I I'll point out the big de- decrease in temporary wages is due to the reduction um in our, where's, do we see temporary wages up there? Salaries and wages, yeah. That's, so I I mentioned the thirty percent decrease in salaries. Uh, we also had around a sixty percent decrease in temporary wages, the bulk of that coming from the lifeguard program. We we do not have lifeguards in the budget for next year. The the operations of like, we've tried for two years in a row to hire lifeguards at the city. Offering a lifeguard program necessitates other staff at the city to run the program. Um, that's, that's not possible at this time without a recreation superintendent. So, um, questions? I honestly, I would, I spent so much time diving into the parks budget this afternoon. I didn't get into many weeds in the recreation budget, but if there are anything, if there's anything in the recreation budget that jumps out to you, I'm happy to to address it. So please feel free to ask.
Councilwoman Mayor. I still have questions on the recreation. So I'm just confused. Recreation program, Sarah showed, if you scroll down or up or. And the lifeguard program, thank you for announcing it publicly, because that's what I commented to you today. I had no idea there was not going to be another lifeguard program. And I want it publicly known that when I asked about the lifeguard chairs and I said something about financial responsibility to have to repair, make new ones, no one ever said there was not going to be a lifeguard program again. And to me, that is the transparency that sometimes we lack. And I worked hard on that. I I surveyed people. You had mentioned in your email to me that it was mostly for um non-taxpaying visitors. I surveyed people in the community who wanted the lifeguard program. So I'm a little frustrated and um.
Councilwoman Duquette, I hear your frustration and.
I just want that and.
I I just want to give you the tools to um, uh, address your frustration. And that is, this is the budget that's been presented. Um, you uh, it can get for other, three other council members on board to put money back in the lifeguard program dedicated. Um, you know, that's your task. Uh, I think what you've heard from our our director, and I can tell you, they've worked very hard to, you know, develop that program and attract uh folks to that program. And it's, it's, it's difficult. Um, so.
I understand it was difficult. It's just that it wasn't shared properly, in my opinion. That's all. But now it has been.
Good. All right. We're, we're clear. Um, any other questions? Go ahead, Councilman Trevor.
Yeah, along that same line, uh, we had a hundred and thirteen thousand in the temporary wages last year. Does that mean since we were never able to hire lifeguards, that we have seventy-five thousand that got rolled over?
No, you'll recall that the Sports Center is not going to break even this year. So the record, the Sports Center is part of the Recreation Fund. So the the Recreation Fund is currently subsidizing operations of the Sports Center.
Gotcha.
And that's why a moment ago, I said, I want, you know, the, my goal for the Sports Center is to get that closer to a break-even level, which would free that payroll back up for other recreation programs. I would love nothing more than to employ a Recreation Coordinator and start offering recreation programs at the city in the near future. But we need to figure out how to focus or how to um uh optimize and get our multimillion-dollar sports facility to a point where it can free up more of those recreation funds so that we can do that.
Sure. Yeah, thanks for clarifying that. Um, one of the biggest um comments that we heard at the workshop at the facility was the need for more programming. And so it is good to hear that Ryan's working on programming. Do you foresee, you you said you hope to have that up within the next year. Do you foresee that affecting the budget at all?
Um, in a positive way, a hundred percent, because more programming is going to drive more membership, which is going to bring more money into the Recreation Fund. Um, the the revenue from the James Russell Sports Center goes back into recreation. So um, and we also, the partnership we're exploring with the USTA would be a a zero cost, zero monetary cost partnership with the city. We're not, uh, we don't have to do the hiring. We don't have to do the background checks. We don't have to provide all the benefits for the instructors that they hire. Um, we we share the revenue that they earn. That's a model that we've, you know, explored across all of our parks. It's similar to how, how we use, how we activate Memorial Field and the rest of the sports complex. We get paid by the groups who use those facilities. So the Sports Center, if if, when USTA is up and running, we're, we will get paid for the community using that facility. But every program we offer with USTA is going to be a a a member, um, that members of the Sports Center will receive benefits. So the, or so I should say, will receive program discounts. So the the goal there is to drive membership as well. You're going to see in two weeks from tonight, an updated fee schedule that I think is going to dramatically improve our membership experience at the Sports Center as well. Ryan's done outstanding outreach and gotten feedback on what our members would like to see that would um not only increase membership, but lead to more member retention. You'll recall from that presentation a month or two ago that member retention has been a big challenge. We have a really great um uh concept going forward for how to retain membership. So uh, your question again, Mr. Schreiber, we're sorry, I.
Yeah, you you had said that uh we're moving away from, from providing programming, yet that was the one thing that most people were asking for, and you were hoping to bring more of.
And I will say that even since that meeting, um, and Ryan's beginning at the city, we've hired three tennis instructors as a city. And we are, we have tennis programs going on every day in the Sports Center right now. The the USTA is going to bring in that catalog of twenty or more different tennis programs for every age group. And and they'll bring tournaments and leagues and things like that. So what we benefit from a USTA partnership is their vast catalog and um experience of running tennis facilities all over the country. And and their uh sort of outsourcing of the employment of those pros and the instructors that currently we have to recruit for and and bring on board and go through the whole process, which comes with lots of additional costs.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one more question, please.
Absolutely. Just a half second, one clarifying question. Um, uh, Councilwoman Duquette, if you don't mind. Uh, the revenue from the Russell Center goes into which fund? Rec Capital Improvement Fund or, okay, the rec fund, thank you. Thank you. Go ahead.
So then back to this um slide. What then are recreation programs if we don't have a recreation program anymore? I guess I'm just confused.
Do you want to define?
Because you've got half and half there.
Salary is in the J E R and half of it's over in the rec funds for all of the memorial. Um, because right now he's doing just a ER, but next year we have him half and half.
Is it a little misleading, though, to call that recreation program?
That's my, my confusion. And thanks.
So it 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 might be better just to think of it as generally like recreation division salaries and wages.
Okay.
The the program, when I think of programs, I think of like coed volleyball and, you know.
And you said we didn't have.
I don't know, any, you know, aquatics or whatever it is. So um, it it's, it's more, I think correctly defined as just Recreation Division salaries and wages.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, moving along.
I think that's my last budget.
Thanks, Jason. I think that's going to bring Holly up. Does anyone need a quick break? Is that okay? Yes? Uh, we'll take a five-minute break, six fifty-six. Reconvening at seven oh five PM with Public Works Director Holly Ellis to walk through um the streets or utilities.
Uh, last council meeting, we talked about streets and our capital projects. Uh, tonight, we are here to discuss uh utilities. So there are questions on streets from last week. Please let me know. But um, we'll start with the Public Works Department, Admin and Engineering. Um, I'm Holly Ellis, Public Works Director, and right next to me is Rod Brigette, our Utility Supervisor. He's over our distributions and collections. So here's, he's here to help fill in any gaps on um our utilities in particular. Uh, from this department, Public Works, Utilities, uh Water and Sewer, very similar budgets to last year. A lot of the changes in prices is from our capital improvement projects, which we discussed last week. But I'll go over our uh personnel and our, any changes and highlights from previous years, anything big. So Public Works Admin and Engineering, these are the folks here at City Hall. So this is myself in that budget. Our city engineer, two project managers, one public works inspector and our admin. Uh, what's different from years past is we actually just consolidated two divisions. So there's a Y or a large salary and wage increase. That's because our Public Works Admin in our Engineering Department have now merged into Public Works Admin and Engineering. That was a carryover from previous years when we had Infrastructure and Development Services all under one division. Um, so this is completing that transition. So in reality, um, the budgeted number of employees has not changed since the previous year. But that, um, it it looks like it's increased quite a bit. Where our admin and engineering, there's no changes from previous years. Um, Jason did a very good job describing how we budget. We budget based on years past. So for this department, it is um pretty uneventful in our budget. If there's no questions, we can move on to the other portion of our water department, which is our treatment and water distribution. So to start with water treatment, we have two water treatment plants, one Little Sand Creek and the other one Lake Plant. These treatment facilities are operated by a water treatment supervisor and three operators. All of these employees are licensed per IDAPA in state standards. The big highlight in the, uh, yeah, highlights from our water treatment plant, in addition to the capital projects that we spoke to last week. You will see there is a large water master planning effort. We have two plans that we're planning on working on next year. The first is that Little Sand Creek Water Treatment Plant. We do have a si- facility plan, but it's not detailed. Uh, that plant is quite old and we need to think more strategically on how we are going to preserve that life, the life of that plant and keep it online. So this planning effort will be the first step to really um planning to keep that plant operable. The other planning effort is our Risk and Resiliency Plan. This is an IDAPA requirement. This will look at all of our treatment facilities and prepare them for uh sustainability. Look at risks, cybersecurity attacks as part of that, um, physical, uh, even terrorist attacks as part of that. Um, but again, this is in a a DEQ Requirement Plan document. The other engineering services on here will be to help the um raw water intake has a it's on a gate, it's a um.
Version name?
No, the the intake, I I blanking on the name for the screen is the, the intake screen is broken and so it needs to be repaired. Um, so that, that bar screen will be replaced. And so that's that large um infrastructure repair. There are also some sensors at the water treatment plant that need to be repaired.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Holly, it would be a little bit easier for me to follow if you just pointed out the dollar values, because that's where my brain's kind of honing in as you mention those things. Because there's so many things that are on the sheet is is, can you do that or do you not have that in front of you?
I've got it. Uh, yes. I've got it, uh, yes. So for our master planning efforts, this is for the Little Sand Creek Water Treatment Plant Facility Plan and the Risk and Resiliency Plan. Those are a one hundred and forty thousand budgeted effort. And then the um, going down to the services, eighty-eight thousand dollars is for the sensors at the water treat, the lake water treatment plant. And just below that, the one hundred fifty, services, infrastructure is for that raw water intake screen.
Okay, that's super helpful. It's like zoned right in on that. Thank you.
I'll continue to, the other thing that I wanted to highlight on the water treatment was, under Capital Improvement Building, eighty thousand dollars. This is at the Little Sand Creek Water Treatment Plant. We have an, at a staircase that's exposed. It doesn't have a roof cover over it. And so our uh, operators are challenged in the winters, not only shoveling snow off of it, but it gets really icy. So the plan is to cover that staircase so that our operators are, um, able to operate the plant more safely in the winter months. That's our water treatment department. Switching over to district.
Mayor? Uh, go ahead.
Holly, uh, hey, real quick question, and this may be a really stupid question, but I'm going to ask.
There are no stupid questions.
Anyway, um, with the expansion of the, the lake water treatment facility a number of years ago, do we need the Little Sand Creek Water Treatment Plant?
It's, that's a great question. We've um, kind of tossed that around for years. The answer is yes. Um, it's great for redundancy. Um, that plant operates very efficiently. Um, so it produces very cheap water. Um, it's very easy to operate. It's very easy to keep that plant online and it's a great backup. In this, if our lake water treatment plant, for example, went down, um, it runs off of pumps and electricity. We can run that uh, Little Sand Creek Water Treatment Plant off of gravity. So very minimal electricity.
Then could you help me? What, what percentage of our water would come through that facility?
It depends on the time of the year.
The maximum.
I believe, I, I believe it operates up to five MGD if it was really pumping, but I think it typically operates up to two.
Typically during summer, summer months, like when it's getting hotter. I mean, we got the flows coming down out of the watershed. They still got to discharge a, a certain amount of water in to maintain the creek. So they're dropping down to about a million gallons a day.
And?
Out of that.
And what is the total needs of the city?
Depends on who's irrigating during the summer months. Um, we'll say three million.
So a third, a third?
A third during the summer months, but during, heavier flows during spring.
More comes out of that.
Later. You know, they can run that plant plus a supplement out of.
Yeah, it's my understanding um, in the, in the cold season when people aren't irrigating, um, at times we can almost service the entire city out of the Sand Creek.
Okay.
Which I've heard is higher quality, better taste, uh, more efficient to run. Uh, I know they do have to operate and run the, the lake plant to keep things, flowing and working. And then in the summer, when the Sand Creek flows re- are reduced, uh, and our demand is much higher, that's when we uh, uh, switch to the lake plant full, almost full time for the majority of it.
And the water temperature is about eight degrees cooler, ten degrees cooler coming out of Sand Creek. So that mixes into the system with the water that's coming out of the lake.
And there is a taste, you'll, you'll notice it if you um, you, you can notice in the summertime.
Yeah.
It's still great water, but.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Our, our distribution, so our distribution is, all of our pipes that distribute water to the system and our water meters. This is run by our utility supervisor right here, Rod Brigette. Uh, he also runs our sewer collection department. Um, underwater though, there are five operators that he supervises. Um, all to support water distribution. One of those five operators is a dedicated meter reader. And there is also a locator and that locator is split between our water utility and our sewer utility. And we do, we do have a mechanic and I apologize, um, our city mechanic, I, I missed him on our Public Works Administration and Engineering. So the big highlights for our water distribution, um, if you look at the line item, that is, one hundred seventy dol- one hundred seventy thousand dollars. Um, that is our meter replacement program. So each year, our, our meters are in about a ten year rotation. So there's a little bit more in that pocket of money to do more meter replacements next year. These are existing meters. There is also under Capital Improvements Building, thirty thousand dollars. This is a project at the city shop where our Streets Department and our Water Distribution and Collections, Department works out of. We do a lot of maintenance at the shop. Um, our shop space is very limited and unfortunately we have a lot of equipment, particularly from our Streets Department, that is worked on a lot and will hang out in our shop a lot. Um, this proposal is to build a roof overhang at the facility, so that we have more operational space and we can move equipment, have it remained undercover, and um, work more efficiently on our vehicle maintenance.
And Holly, can I just pause you for a second? And Sarah, um, is it safe to describe, the hat the council's wearing when looking at these budget as the utility? So you're now the water utility for these numbers, not, not really general fund city stuff.
Big. I got that.
Just wanted to make sure that's clear.
No, we can't touch that.
The, the final number to highlight here for you is eighty thousand dollars. This is for a service vehicle for the water treatment to plant, or sorry, for the water distribution team to replace uh, an existing truck that is dated in twenty eleven. Rod, did you want to highlight anything I missed from the water department?
The budget pretty much stayed the same. I did switch some numbers around. We had meter retail, that was a hundred and fifty thousand last year. I kind of looking at the home building, what's going on? Those are new meters for new accounts. I lowered that budget to a hundred thousand this year. The operational was a hundred and fifty, but I increased the operational to, or no, it was a hundred thousand last year, but I increased that to one seventy this year. We're finding, we're, the meters out in the system are starting to fail. We're ended up, uh, right now, we just finished up reading. We have close to two hundred that are not reading, sending a signal. We need to go replace those meters and it's going to be an ongoing cycle, ten year cycle, replacement program. So, that falls under operational costs. So that's why I did a shift in those numbers. Um, maintenance costs, like, everything else pretty much stayed the same for the year.
Any questions on our water treatment or distribution? Moving over to wastewater, we'll start with sewer collections. So our sewer collections, this is the team who operates our lift stations. We have nineteen lift stations in Sandpoint. That's a, a huge number um, for an area of our, a town of this size. Uh, it's because our topography is just so flat that we need to pump a lot of uh, sewer to, to operate. Um, they also maintain our, our pipeline and our manholes. This d- division is run by our supervisor, again, right here, Rod Brigette. And he has four operators in this division. One is a locator, again, split with water department. The only highlights from this department, um, under the capital improvements, you'll see there's thirty thousand dollars. Again, this is for that roof extension at the city shop to improve operation maintenance at the shop. And then right below that, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars, those are to replace pumps at our pump stations. So those, those lift stations of those nineteen, we have a pump replacement program. Anything to add or highlight?
The only thing I can say about this crew, I mean, we're fully staffed there now with the operation. We do rotate the on-call phone. So we have one operator carries out on call, on-call phone for after-hours, emergency calls during weekends, holidays. They switch Wednesday through, they carry it from Wednesday through Thursday.
And they were called out this week?
Joe was called out when the windstorm hit and responded to all the lift stations, multiple lift stations of power outages and, trip alarms and all that stuff. So, I think he put in about seven hours on, on that, during that night and called in a couple of different times. And those lift stations are tied in with the on-call phone, so.
Uh, it automatically triggers a call and uh, there's emergency backup power at those or generators or?
Currently, we have two lift stations with emergency back pu- backup power. Um, we have a tow behind generator.
Oh, gotcha.
And we have transfer switches at all the lift stations and, you know, throughout the years, we've kind of known which lift stations can go overnight and which one, it only maintained for a couple of hours, like City Beach when it's busy. Um, so, they take care of all the lift stations.
Rod, thank you for, uh, you do so much work in your team, uh, I mean, everyone here at City Hall, but, when there's a problem, you know who to call.
The last piece to our wastewater division is the wastewater treatment. We have one wastewater treatment plant at the city. It is run by our wastewater treatment plant supervisor. Under him, there are five operators. Um, we do have one position open right now. If you know anyone who is looking for a job or hiring for one wastewater treatment plant operator. Um, the big efforts for next year are covered in our capital, projects that we discussed last week. So one is designed for our new wastewater treatment plant, and the bridge projects, which are the projects that are needed to get us to that replacement. So that is the screw press that we're looking to replace in our solid handle, solids handling building. Are there any questions for wastewater? If there are any questions for um, our waste, our, our solid waste disposal or fiber, um, that's in Public Works as well. Our so waste management is our contract service for trash services and, for fiber, it's, it's pretty bare bones, but um, Rod is our maintenance team for all of our fiber conduit that we do have in town.
Council, any questions? Thanks for the thorough overview, everyone. Very informative. All right. So are we going to touch on revenue, Sarah, or? Thanks, Rod. Thanks, Wes. Thanks, Holly.
We are through um, all of those and now on to citywide revenue sources. I showed this bu- um, this slide last time. I just wanted to put it in here again. Um, and the revenues are the same as expenses. Um, so it's, it's applicable to both. Just showing the trending of the um, government funds versus proprietary and the fiduciary funds.
Sarah, why you pause there for a second? Can you just give us some background ahead? Is this a typical, uh, depth that you have gone into in years past, or is this kind of broader, sort of deeper?
Yeah, no, in the past, when, when the budget was presented, it was just um, Jennifer presented it. Uh, city administrator presented it and then um, nope, these are, these are all different.
Thanks for putting it together.
Way to do it. So if, um, please give feedback. If you don't like it, you want a bit more, let me know. Um, then this is a breakdown of the different governmental funds and showing you the changes of those for the, again, this was in here last, last week or last time as well. The general fund is obviously our biggest um, governmental fund with our parks, um, Parks Capital Improvement Fund, the um, Recreation Fund, Fiber Optic, and then, um, the Impact Fees, which is actually called the Capital Project Fund. Um, and then these are the proprietary funds. Um, you can see the, um, just the one that jumps out to me is the wastewater, um, as it's growing for our new treatment plant, our budgeting for that. All right, the different citywide revenue sources. This is uh, at a, um, very, high um, level. There's multiple different details within each of these. So, um, I'm keeping this at, um, I'm doing it detailed, but um, at a higher level. So, and then we'll get into the property taxes, the intergovernmental, um, and the beginning cash, um, and later. Um, but the, you can see the top one there is a beginning cash. I want to point that one out because what that is, is um, um, hopefully every year we come in under budget. Um, that is the goal to not go over budget. When you do go, um, when you do come in under budget, you create what we call, um, uh, um, it goes into what, either one, you have reserves that you have to fill. Um, you have numerous other things you've got to fill, but it will create a cash balance that can be used in future years for, um, we talked about last time, one-time projects. Um, in the governmental world, we call that beginning cash. So when you see that budgeted and called beginning cash, that's what it's coming from. Um, and so you can see here the beginning cash, most of our um, water and wastewater treatment plant, or the wastewater and water, um, capital projects all comes from beginning cash. Cause you put aside over the years, the money to actually do those projects. Um, also general fund. Right now, this year, we have, well, we'll see a slide later on, beginning cash for that, uh, where it's at. Um, and then you have interfund transfers. What those are is the general fund, um, provides services to the water and sewer and garbage funds, the proprietary funds. And for those services, and I'll just take Biden as an example. I work multiple, um, and I work on all those funds. So my thought, my salary is, charged to the general fund. However, the other funds reimburse that for that. So that's what the interfund transfers are. There's a um, on the, on your one page, somewhere here, you'll have line that of interfan, for uh, interfund transfers of the revenue, and as expense of those balanced to each other. Cause you'll see them coming in and coming out of the different funds. The um, contribution and donations, um, that's, that is what it is. And rents and royalties, that's a very small amount. That's going to be if we own something and we are renting it out. Um, also that's where the park rentals come in, as, as that's where the, um, they're coded at. Um, investment earnings, that's if, um, anything we have out there that we're earning investments on. Fines, that can be uh, police fines. Um, mostly that's police fines. Charges for services, that's going to be your um, charges for all of our water, wastewater, our utilities. Those are services we provide to the community. Also services, um, um, police is a good one. We do assert, we provide services to um, if, um, to the school district. We're doing um, their SRO. So that's a, that's where we're getting money back from the school district. That's going to be a charge for a service. Um, intergovernmental, we're going to get into this one in detail, um, also in a later slide. That's going to be any revenues that are coming in, from a, another government. So we have state, we have local, and we also have SURA that is um, in that. Grants, those are going to be um, two, two things in the budget for grants. We, in, everything, every grant that we know we're going to have for next year is in the budget. And then we also have a million dollars that we have in the general fund that is sit, that sits there. To where if we do get a, but a grant during the year, it is then allowed. We have the budget authority to use that. So we don't have to go amend that budget every time. If we don't use it, it just, it doesn't get used. And we have used that, I would say, every year that I, that I've been here, we've used at least a portion of that for something. Um, licenses and permits, that can be anything from um, building permits to business licenses to all of the things I would say here at City Hall. Um, mostly all the things that, um, business licenses and there's that, I would say, um, probably forty different ones. And you'll be seeing the, the schedule that comes next, um, at the next council meeting. That is most, all of that stuff is licenses and permits. Um, other taxes, that's our resort city tax. And um, we ask, but not least is our property taxes. And we'll get into those. Um, I'll be sending these out, uh, these slides out. I'm not going to go over this. These are just the numbers behind what's up above. Um, revenue sources, this is the beginning cash and this is by fund. So uh, this is just interesting to see. I just wanted to point out the, obviously the black one right in the middle stand out. Um, those are the, um, beginning cash that was used for the JER. We received that donation in twenty-two. And then since that is already received, it sits there as cash and then we use, I mean, when we budget for it, we actually are budgeting the beginning cash to use it for that um, project. Uh, revenue sources, again, this is just the general fund. So um, here you can see our big um, general fund re- uh, revenue sources are going to be our property taxes at the very bottom. Um, also our in, um, intergovernmental and um, and our beginning cash there. And then miscellaneous self, there's, some throughout all the other ones, but those are the biggest ones that we're going to cover in later. Again, the numbers behind that. So um, when I send these slides out, you can look at those. Um, this is the intergovernmental revenue for the general fund. So the breakdown of what we receive, um, is going to be, like I said, local sharing and then also state sharing and then SURA. So the top one there, local government sharing is Bonner County. We receive, uh, Bonner County, um, money for um, streets and um, repair for street maintenance, um, and projects. Also IHD, we receive money from that contract or that, I guess, agreement that we have with them. They technically own all the roads in town. Um, besides a few that they have needed to us downtown, that's the only ones we actually own. They own all the other roads in town. And this is the money that they give us because they collect the money from all the, um, all the taxpayers. And so they give us the money that they're collecting on our behalf. And then um, remitting to us so we could actually care of our own, um, um, owned streets and roads. We have, also have state, um, sharing liquor. This is liquor funds. We have also have state um sharing liquor. This is liquor funds that um is remitted back to the city. We have states um sales taxes remitted back to the city. Um, and then also in that sales tax is not what is derived within the town. That is a um, well, I mean, it can be. But what they do is they collect all of it across the state and then they have a uh basically a percentage that they're doing that they have a lot. They do parts to um. Multiple different things. I can get into more detail on that. Um, if you wanna come in one by one and I'll figure out.
Sarah, can I pause you there for a sec on the uh local independent highway district? Um, it looks like it's been increasing every year and it's flat for two thousand twenty-six to five hundred thousand. Is that just a projection you have? Because you won't have those until the county gets taxed, remember?
Those ones don't come into the county. That's what I I'm just projecting.
You're projecting? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, those those the property tax stuff comes from the county. These ones here, um, they're just based on prior years actuals. Um, and then the um, there's also highway sharing that comes from the state. Uh, we have three different house bills. Well, regular um one that came and that's from. A long, long time ago. Then we had a house bill three twelve and house bill three sixty-two that gave us um um additional money. So those three things equal what we get from the state for our um highway sharing. Um, the last but not least is the SURA, the urban renewal district. That is um considered intergovernmental because it's another um government type entity.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Trevor.
Uh, just a question on SURA. Is that that's not the total amount that they have in their reserves? That's just what we're asking them to send back to us for our projects that we've chosen this year.
Yeah, so the process that we've done in the past is that we um generate our our what our projects are for next year. Then we give them that list of what we are asking them to provide for next year, and then they give us our blessing on those, and then that's what they put in their budget and what we put in our budget.
Right.
So the majority of this one is the downtown um phase three project and in the Great Northern, some of that is in there as well.
Right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Big understanding question. Does SURA funds come from the businesses downtown?
No.
They so when SURA, the footprint of our urban renewal districts was created. Prior to its creation, those properties would have been taxed by many different entities. District, library, county, highway district, city, um, and others, ambulance. Um, so SURA, when it's created, it it flatlines all of those um. Property values, any increase in new value, somebody built a new building, you're now getting tax revenue. Um, those entities don't all get their money. It comes to SURA. So it's money from property taxes created in a district.
Okay, that's that's kind of what I was understanding. Thank you. And that's in the Sandpoint downtown.
Uh, we have two districts, one in the north and one in the south.
And what does the north cover?
It's kind of a donut looking uh feature, but it's generally from Baldi. Well, actually from Super One Larch, north up to Baldi, all the way up to the northern part of the airport.
Okay, thanks.
All right, um, probably we're gonna jump into property tax. And now I have several slides on this, so please stop me if um if you have any questions. The um, this is also in the tab on ClearGov. Um, all of these are in there. Every year I update them. Caveat odd is is that we, since we don't have final numbers, those will be changed and updated as it's as I get new numbers and um. Um, on that on the actual budget book. So our property tax levy come um is um be is divided between two funds. We have a levy for the recreation and also for general fund. Um, recreation is four point five percent of the total um amount of budget or the budget levy. You can see here. That um it's um obviously been increasing over the years. The I do want to point out the difference between um twenty-three. Well, most uh twenty-three and twenty-four is that we had, and you'll see this in the later slide, we had um resort city tax. When you budget. When you receive more revenues than what you actually budget per state um statute, you have to give that as property tax um relief. To the taxpayers. So that has created that in those two years. So in twenty-two, we receive more and in twenty-three, we receive more. So and that's the slide I would that I would, this is the breakdown of of the where you can see that foregone. So. And it creates the foregone. So this is the breakdown of. And I'll start here in twenty-two at the very bottom here. This is the base property tax of what it was. Sorry, my whole thing is popping up, but I can't see it. But I can't point that is. Um, it's at the base property tax, there is a four point four million dollars. You have your three percent that you're allowed to take. Then you also have new construction rolls. You have foregone taken. So if you had any foregone in the past, you're allowed to take either one percent of that, and it can be used. Um, for operation, it can really be used for anything, and that can then also be rolled forward, and you can use that as basically your base property tax. You also have an option to do a three percent of your foregone. Um, if you want to, that can only be used for capital projects. And then after that year, it it goes away. You can never use it again. So I I have never ever suggested um nor proposed to do that, but if you guys want to do, you could do that. With foregone. Um, and then this top line there is the actual foregone. So if there was any, like I was just describing, the um resort city tax. That was over budget, then that's what you um have to reduce the um levied amount by. So twenty-two, for example, here, that total levy for that year was four point six eight uh million dollars that we levied for property taxes that year. That then rolls forward to the next year. Um, of the twenty-three is your base property tax, and then you just do that repeat all the way over. And then you go and you do that and you keep, that's how that's how that works. So it's just showing you there that that foregone there in twenty-three and twenty-four. Really um impacts the future for the until we use all that foregone. It's basically. A hundred, um, three hundred and fifty, sixty thousand dollars that now will not be be able to be collected. Um, and that's why I also suggest that we take that foregone of one percent every year until we actually can. So. Um, if it can also be looked at that that's property tax relief for all the citizens that they um that they are not paying um of that, so.
So uh, just to highlight here, Sarah, is it correct? Three percent this year plus new construction, uh, one fifty-four plus eighty-nine. We're gonna have new dollars in the budget of approximately from property tax, uh, two hundred and forty thousand dollars, new dollars. So.
Yeah.
Just a point for the council, you remember our health insurance went up about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, so.
Yeah, and and I'll point out too that this is also the twenty-six still projected because I don't have the final construction rules. I guarantee this number, then eighty-nine will go down because I overproject that. Just I don't want to miss out on eighty about the weekend, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Trevor.
And you said the foregone that we lost out and that had to be given back as property tax relief, that was from the resort city tax. So it was. Lodging tax that then was taken off of people's property taxes.
Yes, that is the state statute that um and then also in our ordinance that if you have, if you have one of those um resort cities taxes, then if you over and so. So now I have budget mechanisms um built into our budget that that will not happen.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Well, hopefully not happen. If it does, it's gonna be good. Well, it would be a lot, but um, all right. So I also wanted to show, I think this is important to see. Um, is the assessed property market um values, how they've changed over the years, and also how they relate to property taxes. Um, again, I want to point out that we do not get the assessed values until um up toward twenty-five until August. So these are really hard to predict. In fact, I. What all I do year to year is I just take last year's and I add the amount of of new construction rolls, and that's what I put on there because it is hard to say. Um, I don't want to put this too high or too low, so I just do that until we get the actuals.
And this comes from the county. If you if you're not aware, they every five years, they go do a assessment. And.
Yes.
It like per neighborhood. Um, so they, after five years, in theory, they've gone around to hit everyone. And they give us whatever our our uh market valuations are.
Uh, this one's even more interesting. Um, when you look at it from way back in twenty and oh nine, um, how much it decreased over the um, the.
Recession, yeah.
Session, and then now you can see how much it's um gone up. And of course, granted, it does have all the new construction rolls over the years that roll into this, but it's just, it's very interesting to watch.
Wow.
The um, how much the valuation has increased over the years.
Three times.
And then this um slide is the amount of tax per one thousand. So as the um, you can kind of see a direct correlation, but opposite. Um, as the um, as the valuations go up, the um property taxes go down. Um, per that, but that doesn't mean your tax bill goes down. It just means that it's just a different number that um, the dollar amount per thousand.
Because your valuations have gone up.
Yeah. Um, and then the actual comparison, this is the property tax um levy from last year. And then this is just looking at it side by side with the current year levy and how it's different. Um, proposed levy, how it's different. Um, and then at the very bottom there, I always like to include in our detail or in our um stuff that's out on the um internet for everyone is a. A median home price valuation and how much that the taxes would cost. And then also with the proposed new budget, um, what that would do to your actual tax bill. And again, reminding you that this is just the city portion of it. So um, that is not going to be the full tax bill, just the amount that's related to that. So. In other words, a um median um or a house value um at um about seven hundred and fifty, about seven hundred and forty thousand dollar. Would be um an increase of ninety-six dollars, they would see. The next slide is, so you have two factors going on when you're talking about um property taxes. You don't just have the increase that the jurisdictions are asking for, you also have. Your personal market value and fluctuation. So you can have an actual decrease on your valuation. Um, but that doesn't necessarily mean that you have a decrease in your taxes. And so I, this is um, I think, super helpful that you can um point. Um constituents to to see that. So um, or if you have a a large increase compared to what everybody else is seeing. Um, then um, compared to what the market or the rest of the the overall is saying, you're gonna see a bigger portion of that. Pie, I guess, is what you would say. So um, like that negative, let's say you had a decrease of two percent. You actually will still see an increase in your taxes, but it's going to be um less than if you're. If it just stayed zero and did not change at all. I know there's been some questions around the resort city tax and um different funding and what it is. So I wa- I threw in a couple of these just for um for digestion. This is the um, this is only we go um only taking into effect the seven percent that's not street related um fund, so.
Yeah, and just to clarify, we have two resort city tax, if you're not, uh, if you don't recall. So one is this one.
The um, so this is just showing the the um where they where is going. Um, so we have our our actual resource hate tax dedicated to a public transportation contract that we have. Park maintenance, including invasive species, though um Jason's talked in that earlier. Um, that contract is forty thousand. We cover, I think, thirty um six thousand um with our resource city tax pays for that um. To at the the invasive species. Um, police services, fire service and recreation services. So it did um. I wanted to point out the recreation that did cover a portion of the um lifeguards. So that's how you can you see that going to zero this year. The fire services, you can just see the percentages here with the numbers. So. How it's how it's changed. Now, this is also want to point out, this is a hundred percent of the budget. So even though the budget might change. It it and go up or go down or whatever, this is just a hundred percent of of that, what it it is. The next one is, um, and again, I know that the public transportation was a topic, so I wanted to show here. The um amount of, and this is actuals that we have collected, and then I've also put in here what we projected. And this is with the. Um, if the hotel um is um is torn down this year. So we would be losing quite a bit of resort city tax next fiscal year in twenty-six. And so this is just showing the percentage of. Um, what um, what just in graph form, the the anticipated revenue loss and then the. Um, the resort city tax, what would be covered by the that um contract.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Trevor.
I believe there is a meeting on that last night. Is it still expected to be torn down this year?
Um, that meeting was at the Planning and Zoning Commission, and there was an omission of a line that talked about a variance. I want to call out Wayne for calling that out, Wayne Better, in our audience on our planning commission. So uh, they had to table that item to renotice it, to include language about the variances. Uh, but that was for an extension of their existing C U P. Uh, I have discussed with the um developers, as well as Jason has, and. Uh, depending on how the next couple months go, they uh would be looking at a early September uh demolition.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor. When does that resort city tax and?
By her?
Yeah.
Twenty thirty.
We went out and had it uh increased to fourteen percent. I think it was a ten year.
Twenty thirty-two, twenty thirty-three. Jason, do you reclog?
It's a ways out there. I could look and find that for you.
Thanks.
Oh, actually, it's in the budget book on the resorts that he taxed revenue tab. It has one entire thing on there that has a date, seven days.
If you haven't picked up, Sarah really likes, I assume, the digital format.
It's just fine to him.
I gotta say, I this, I know it's old school and you don't like.
No, it's awesome.
This is helpful too.
It'll be pretty textured this year. The last minute, thanks to them.
Yeah, thanks, Deb.
Thank you, Deb.
You're welcome.
All right, so I did not cover, I probably covered about, I'm not even ten percent of what is actually in there for revenue. So. If there is anything more that you guys are wanting details on or whatever, let me just email me, let me know, and I can actually do a short presentation of the next one that, you know, if there's anything else that you'd like to see or any more detail. I thought these, these would be the most helpful to actually understand what's exciting. Especially the general fund. That's the biggest um. Question in um what's going into that one.
Thank you. Council members, any questions?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Um, Sarah, just a real quick question. Uh, if we look back historically, are there other revenue sources that? We were utilizing that we aren't today, a- as an example, a lot tax. Are there other other revenue sources that are within our toolkit that we're not using today?
Um, I it's not it not necessarily in the toolkit, but the J P A is a big one that we had for several years and then it dropped off. That was. Close to two million dollars. So you will see that in the nu- numbers when you see actuals. I have this budgets here, um, budget numbers, but when we look at actuals, you definitely see those. Um, I is law taxes the only one that since I've been here that has really dropped off? Um, everything else has been, thank goodness, we haven't had a recession or anything really since I've been here, and that's been eight years. So there it has been very. I would say consistent. The the COVID was a big, kind of a big not knowing what it was gonna do. And that was what happened with the resort city taxes. We did not know where, at at the very beginning, we did not know what it was gonna do. We anticipated that it was ever gonna stay home. Um, so we budgeted um lower, and that is not what happened here at all. In fact, everyone came here. So um, that's what drew us into a two-year.
And if we if we implement parking fees, that would be another revenue source.
So that's not been in and in the, that has not been included in the budget. That has been, uh, we've talked about that a lot. Do we include it? Do we not include it? Um, we decided not to include it because we're so um so new in the process. We have no way to really estimate how much it's gonna be. Um, we can always open the budget if we want to um in the um next year if we need to. Um, and so that was kind of a more conservative way of doing that. Um, and if it it, once we, if we're starting now and then, um, yes, like I said, we can open the budget, but.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Trevor.
Oh, a question to that. If we did implement fees and didn't reopen the budget, would they have to be offset by property tax relief?
No, that's totally different.
Okay, it's not like the resort.
Yes, that's only resort city tax.
Okay.
So if the voters vote in that a new resort city tax, um, that's when that that is applicable. It's not any other type of um, any other type of revenue source.
Okay, so we simply couldn't spend more than we were budgeting now, so we could. Keep those in a reserve fund and then spend them next fiscal year without opening our budget?
Yes, def- yes, that's totally different, yes.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Yep.
And Sarah, would you consider uh a local improvement district revenue, a revenue source? Because that's another tool.
Yes.
Out there. So um, you should just Google local improvement districts. It's a tool in the state statute that. Allows the council with uh just having a public hearing uh to impose a either citywide or street by street or area. Basically, encumbrance on those property owners for a specific project, uh, assuming that those are the folks who are gonna benefit from it.
Yeah, and that's a good to point out. That actually is on the one page on the very, very bottom. That is the L I D fund, part of our um, our fiduciary or agency funds. Um, in the past, we used to budget close to a million dollars in there, just in case we did one, and we we did that for years and we never did. So I just removed that because I think that we'll have plenty of. Uh, if we're even considering that, we'll have plenty of time to get that in that next year or open up budget if we ever needed to do that, so.
And and I've seen those here in Sandpoint work a couple ways. One is the council imposed L I D, but another example would be like, say, you live on. Oliver Birch and the road's flooding and the city doesn't have money to fix it. And we say, well, we can fix it. We have the engineers, we have the equipment. Um, it can be a a citizen initiated L I D initiated L I D where they say. Yeah, put it on our our taxes, uh, you do the work and then we do it and then it goes on their tax bill. yeah, put it on our, our taxes, uh, you do the work and then we do it and then it goes on their tax bill, so.
We currently have one on our books that, um, and that is the sewer main extension on Boyer. So that was the back of this floor. And we've had a couple, I mean, I think it was sidewalks on Boyer was one. Um, those are the only two that I think have been around since I've been here.
Thank you.
All right, um, staff, I just want to thank everyone for their, uh, hard work and council, your hard work for
Mister Mayor, may I say something real quick? Uh, just a statement here. I just want to say thank you, Sarah, and all the department heads. I don't want any misnomers that, m- myself personally, I won't speak for the rest of the counselors, that we pushed back this, um, the finalization of the maximum revenue because we weren't getting the information from any of the department heads. It is just a crazy time of year. And as you presented, not getting the state revenue sharing until May, the property tax levies till July, the assessed property taxes in August. And trying to get this balance all wrapped up, uh, at the end of August is incredibly challenging. So I appreciate all the detail. I know how busy you guys are and all of the office time, uh, at least that I've received here uh, in the last week or so and will be receiving, so.
Thank you, Councilman Dick. Appreciate that.
Mister Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Trevor.
Yeah, I would like to echo that, uh, appreciation for staff time on this. Um, I do have one question. Um, I was particularly swayed by a conversation, um, between Counselor Howard and, uh, Central Services regarding our, the timing of our, uh, computer replacement in the IT department. And my question is, um, if we were to direct a department to come up with an alternate funding plan for an item like that, is that something that the council would need to vote on? Like, would that require a, a motion in a second and then a vote of the council?
And all, can you go, well, first, um, I'm not sure if you saw the communications that was corrected. It wasn't the shorter time period. I believe that, uh, Cheryl had thought it was a bit longer. Um, I want to say it was, was it five she's in?
Yeah, she had, uh, previously, uh, used three years. She went back and checked it. And in fact, the policy is a five-year replacement cycle for the city.
Which is what you recommended.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I was
But to, to answer your second question, I mean, uh, council sets the budget, um, you know, uh, to direct us to find alternative revenue. No, that's
No, not revenue.
Okay.
Funding. So, so rather than replacing every three years, going to a system where we replace every five years and perhaps that doesn't cut it by three fifths because the most expensive computers have to be replaced this year, right? So, uh, asking staff to say, hey, if we were to change to this alternate plan, what would that look like in our budget?
And we do have, uh, uh, there is a IT master plan or assessment done a few years ago that I think recommended that five-year computer replacement. Um, but, um, I think you can direct us to, you know, re- revise that for best practices and, um, but ultimately you're gonna set the budget for that line item.
Okay, yeah, I was thinking about that and it's good to hear that it was not even an issue that needed to be corrected. Um, I also was looking at this capital projects for the streets department. And, uh, you know, one point one five million dollars is a lot of money. So, you know, without knowing what the capital expenses would be for, say, the next five years, it's really hard for council to say, well, let's put this off to next year because maybe there's another one point one five million that needs to be done next year. So, um, you know, I would like to see an alternate plan that utilizes less of our funding for those specific, um, streets, equipment items. Um, whether that be going to, you know, leasing for three to five years or maybe looking at used equipment, something like that. Again, I don't want to micromanage departments, but, um, that is something that as a counselor, I would desire to see as part of our decision-making process with this budget.
Sure. And just a little background on that, we, um, we did obviously look at and, and talk to staff and operators about lease versus own. We talked to our mechanic about the benefits, the pros, the cons. Um, you know, that is one-time money. Um, uh, I guess I'd pose two questions. One, uh, to Sarah, if we didn't use that all, does that go into reserves? And then secondly, uh, I would ask you, based on tariff talk and other things, do you think that anything in the world is gonna get cheaper in three years?
The tariffs seem to be changing by day, so it's hard to say that.
So, um, yes, if we did not spend that, it would just be more beginning cash. It wouldn't go into a reserve because it doesn't qualify as a reserve type. However, I will have to point out that the amount that's in the budget this year for one time is because our, our balance is at a point that it needs to be, um, spent down. So I would suggest if you don't want those, we repurpose them for something different. Um, and, and per our po- financial policies, which is also in our budget book, um, what, um, um, uh, it, it actually lists out when you get to a certain balance in our, um, um, in our, in our basic air cash balance, that we need to start spending them. So that's how come those, um, one-time things are in there. Those are a lot more this year than they are in, in the past years and probably in the future years because of that need to spend down that balance. So it doesn't mean that we have to this year, though. If we want to hold off and do that next year, we, we then have had that discussion and direction to do that. And I think that that would be, um, okay, because it's not, yes, we have a policy, but then we also have a direction not to, even if, but we've tried to, if that makes sense.
Yeah, just, thank you.
And so Mister Mayor, uh, along those lines, though, you say we can't use that money like for transportation, like for spot.
On, ongoing expenses. It's not best practices, I think.
Yes, also in the, um, in our financial policies, it outlines what type of, um, what type of funds, what that can be used for.
Right.
So if you do have beginning cash or you do have basically reven- revenues over expenses, then it leads to, um, that balance that you use them for one-time items, um, which is not operating things. Um, and if you, if, if you need more, um, explanation on what
No, I just wanted to make sure that's still what I was told. Okay.
Mister Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman.
I have one more item. Um, beginning back in February, uh, uh, since February, I'd say, I've been working with city staff as well as, uh, our local US Forest Service, our, um, bonfire wildfire mitigation, um, representative. And, uh, very recently spoke with the, uh, grant coordinator for IDL. And, um, there are grant opportunities for, um, that we would be very competitive for, uh, for mitigating wildfire risk in our Little Sand Creek watershed property. Um, without going into too much detail, uh, I believe that we should add two hundred and forty thousand dollars in possible grant funding. And just in case we go for those grants and find it, um, those grants do not require any match from the city. But there is money in our, uh, budget currently for, um, projects in the Little Sand Creek watershed, and that would make us more competitive for those proj- those, uh, grants. So that is something I'd like to see as well. And I didn't want to put it off until
Lucky for all of us, Sarah has anticipated unforeseen grant, uh, funding.
That's what I would, um, I guess suggest, that we do have, um, uh, money that aside for unsupers- seeing grants that we don't, that we have not received yet. So, and that's what I would suggest using, and that's what we normally use, so.
Does it make a difference that it's going to be used in and out of the water fund in the Little Sand Creek watershed?
So further, but yeah, so if it's in the watershed, it's for the water, the water fund, then yes, it would need to be in the water fund.
Right.
Revenue would be in the water fund. Yes.
So if it, if it pleases my fellow counselors, I'd like to see that added to the budget.
Okay, I think, uh, at our workshop on the thirtieth is gonna be the time, uh, but I, I think we should all come to that prepared to, um, put forward any changes or amendments or additions.
So per our, our schedule, we were going to adopt the ma- the maximum or not adopt the tentative.
Yes, yes, that language, yeah.
But it, um, it's, uh, um, and that was gonna be the maximum with no changes in it at that time. We're gonna make changes after that. I think let's, let's talk further and then let's figure out, um,
When the right time would be, yeah.
Uh, and the water fund's a lot different from the general fund when it comes to grants because that is, it's a total different fund and it doesn't work the same way. It's a proprietary fund and does not have the same state requirements and the same, I shouldn't say even state, the federal requirements of the tracking and stuff. So let me do a little bit of research on that, that if it's the same type of need to, um, do that.
And of course, we can always open the budget if we have an opportunity like that, if we all agree, or four of you agree that you want to do that.
Okay, I'd like to limit opening the budget if possible, but yeah, we can follow up.
Good. Excellent. Well, thanks, everyone. Um, for the final item on the agenda, I'd entertain a motion to convene an executive session. Idaho Code seventy-four two oh six one B and D to consider evaluation dismissal or displan of, or to hear complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member or individual agent and to consider records that are exempt from disclosures provided by chapter one, title seventy-four of Idaho Code. Is there a motion?
I move.
Second.
Moved by Spiro, second by Rule. This will be a rule called vote.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Com- Counselor Ducat?
Yes.
Counselor Holgworth?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Shiber?
Yes.
Mister Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clark. At this time, I would ask everyone not participating in this session to please exit the room. And the meeting recording will now end. Good night and thank you for everyone who attended this meeting.